They're putting your garbage right there. Well, that damn thing fell off and dropped down. Locked it up. The knives all loose in there and it rattles so bad.
I'm afraid something might get somebody in on the face.
Oh, yeah. These are about an hour and fifteen minutes good at all. New garbage disposal good to boil when you're done.
Yeah, like you said, it's good for what it is.
Chipmunks are better. Oh, you have no problem? You'll stay? Yeah, there's no problem.
That was nerve wracking.
Gets me I'll eat it. And if it gets old, they don't eat it.
You have to wave it out.
Exactly, yeah. You're better off you catch it and get it the hell out of there. Hey, don't get it tomorrow.
I'd like to call and order the meeting of November eighteenth, twenty fourteen. We often say of the education pledge allegiance.
Lord, we pray that you will give our council members the faith and courage to carry on their duties, to help them to do right, to deal fairly with others, and to place their trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's either number you call or I see you get. And I just asked for Sean to get. Because he's doing all the Columbia work.
Here.
Callenger?
Here.
Simpson?
Here.
Blaken?
Here.
Lloyd?
Place two?
Do you want to receive the meeting minutes for November fourth? Was there any errors or omissions? About those standards presented? Under reading and communication, we have two letters this evening in regards to interest of the vacant seat on the Park Recreation Cemetery Board. First is from Jeff Eaton. Dear Mr. Willard, I would like to fill the position left open on the park board by the recent resignation of Virginia Fattler. I have lived in the community all my life and actively volunteered in the school system since my high school graduation in nineteen eighty. My knowledge and familiarity with the community would be an asset to management of the park. If you have any questions or would like to discuss my interest in the position, please contact me. Sincerely, Jeff Eaton. And someone was from Jeff Jackson. To whom may concern, my wife and I have recently moved back to Columbia. This is a wonderful place to grow up and we look forward to raising our own children here. One of our communities... Sorry about that. One of our community's most valuable assets is our Firestone Park, which is one of the reasons we chose to purchase a house in Parkview Drive. The health of the park is very important to my family and I and should be to your... to our community. Consequently, I would appreciate being considered to serve in a position on the park board. Thank you for your consideration, Jeff Jackson. Under reports of commissions and boards, we received Columbia Park Recreation Cemetery Board meeting minutes from October twenty seventh. Any comments on those? Moving into recognition, first design to appear, friend of four from Crestview, Columbia, and AdAPT Leadership Team regarding Family Fest on July eleventh, twenty fifteen, and the rain date of July eighteenth, twenty fifteen, at Firestone Park.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Yeah, I'm here to seek permission. My coworker Amy Slaughter spoke at the park board for me. I was in the emergency room with my son that night. So she spoke on my behalf that the Crestview, Columbia, AdAPT team would like to do Family Fest again. This will be year five. And they are doing Rain Day because this... this last July posed quite a challenge for the team. They will be doing fireworks again. Rob from Columbia Fireworks would be the one doing it for us. He didn't end up doing it last year because it was a conflict with trying to reschedule with him, but he's on board for both days, so that's what we'd like to do. Chief, always I'm very grateful provides security for us and we're very grateful for that. Any questions?
Insurance?
Yes. To Family Recovery Center. How many years have you been doing that? This will be year five.
Can these dates are all in order to check?
We participate every year. The Adapt Coalition gives us a great deal of support, drug and alcohol education, prevention activities, and we have no follow up to dates. All of our time is donated. Wade Bulley is an active participant on the board and we support their efforts wholeheartedly.
Good endorsement.
I love working with the chief.
After five years, you're most likely about to cut the kinks a little bit.
You know, this year was... this last year, like you said, was a challenge. I mean, the one day it was cold and poured down rain was the day that was the event scheduled, but they still had close about four hundred people on a reschedule. So I was very proud of them. I mean, they did it a month later and they worked very hard to get the word back out. I was very proud of them. So because year before, I think Wade and I said close about eleven hundred. I mean, we were kind of blown away with that. So we're very excited. We have a lot of support, a lot of community support between the Crestview, Columbia communities. And so several of the churches come together and provide all the food for everyone's rights. And so we're very appreciative of all the community's support.
Do you want to motion on that? Dr. Make a motion. Second. Are you going to write? Gap proof is written?
Thank you.
It might go down.
You know, thinking ahead.
Yes.
So.
Yes. Yes.
Callenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
You kissed her, right?
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening that wants to chair the council? Not moving in before.
Okay, I attended the OCWC application that was submitted for the North End Water Improvement. They're ranking them at the county and it's very well. We'll hear once they go to the district. Probably later, so. Attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting and they are prepared to offer five hundred dollars for that seed based project that Larry Cisiba presented and think we got to move forward. I think everybody liked the presentation, so I'm going to go ahead and reach out to them and see what they can do to get that started.
I have a question. Are we going to exclude her potential for that now then?
Yeah, as far as we know, as far as I know, in the chamber knows that the council is on it.
I didn't mean... I knew they didn't want to participate, but their map won't be on this end.
Right.
Good.
Uh, that wastewater plant, we got a blower go out. We have it looked at and repaired. Park and Cemetery, the operation, the control is working well still. And Joy Christmas, just to give you an update on that. This is... this year's event definitely would not have been possible without the volunteers from the church. Really, really appreciate that. Our part, we've been down... down some help and it's all we could do. We can get up the tunnels and the pavilions and stuff that we've raised to do, so I think it'll happen.
You might mention which church it's doing.
It's your church, right?
Yeah. Episcopal Methodist Church is... has the volunteers working on putting the blower lights in. Well, the town workers do the pavilions.
Yeah, do the pavilions and the couple archways and we're really...
I think they've been working pretty regularly.
Oh, absolutely. And I believe there are twelve... twelve volunteers from the church, so very, very helpful. Uh, water treatment plant fixed the water main break. We conducted ten meter change outs. The EPA performed a site visit. Installed new level loggers at water number six. Uh, moving on to electric department, they installed six new services. And they're preparing... preparing to put up the Christmas tree. And that'll be tomorrow. And we thank Mr. Richard Shear from New Waterford for donating the tree. And there were two other families in town, the Ludoff and the Allens, that offered trees, but the New Waterford ones seem to be the best candidates. So we're going to go out there and get that tomorrow. Uh, street department, they're ready to use the brine for the snow as needed. And they picked up as many leaves as they could. Now we've got the snow on them and we're well aware that there's a lot more out there to collect. They finished sealing a few streets two weeks ago, so that's look good to maintain those cracks. And then almost every department tomorrow is going through GIS training through ArcCap. And I was hoping, Katie, you could note that Mike's Tree Services is in town, so we're going to have tree trimmers in town, you know, with the... With them just coming in, it'd be nice to let the community know that we've got a service out there and it's going to be in and around the neighborhoods trimming. And that kind of leads me into, you know, we all... we always got to be safe to make sure that we know who's out there and doing service for us. And we've got to pitch it over to the chief to look. He just conducted a seminar with Wade Bulley about the scams. I'm going to see if you could say a few things.
Sure. Along the lines of the tree trimmers, of course, we just had the people who were actually scammers posing as people dealing with trees. So it becomes important to understand authorized versus unauthorized. The people that are doing the work for Mike's tree trimming are the official ones. They probably aren't going to be going door to door or anything like that. They're probably just going to be doing their work and clearing the electrical lines. If there are questions on who's in your neighborhood or if they're legitimate, we encourage people to give us a call. We noticed a big uptick in scams here as the holiday season approaches, like we do every year. We see that. And we realized, and Wade Bulley came to me and he saw a problem. All these things cross his desk because he's our department detective and he investigates these things. He noticed that we were reaching out on social media sites. We're reaching out through a variety of sources. And we realized we're missing a big demographic. A lot of people don't follow social media or don't have Facebook or don't look at the department's webpage. So we tried to figure out how to reach those folks. We reached out to people on council and everywhere, all of our churches, every place else to try and get the word out. We held a fraud seminar. We had really great attendance. A lot of people came. I think we had about a hundred people, maybe a little more. We had Dutch Village in donate the facilities for us. We appreciate that. Councilor Slunder was there, attended. Mayor Blaken was there. We think we got some pretty good information out of the people who attended. And we demonstrated how easy it is for a scammer. We actually used Mayor Blaken's phone and demonstrated a spoof call where we sent Wade Bulley's aunt's number to his phone and it just worked perfectly. Neither one of them would have any idea that it was the wrong number and not a real number. But you're able to do that just with an app. We got free off of the Google Play Store. So it's so easy for anybody to make it up. Strange, strange thing to happen, but you can just make it happen right in your room there in real time. So we hope that everybody got a lot out of that. If we have need to do more, we will. You might have seen on the news, I think it was just last night, there was another way better. There was a scam under twenty-five thousand dollars using the same identity scam that we talked about here just the other day. It was a lifesaving. So please, when and now, give us a call. The best thing to do is don't give out any information over the phone. Hang up the phone. Don't talk to these people. If you didn't enter a contest, you can't win a contest. And nobody's going to give you a free car or diamonds or money. It just doesn't happen that way. So we appreciate the attendance and support. City council, the city manager who had contributions into this. And we'll do as many of them as we need to get the word out. If we need to do more, we will. And we appreciate all the support we got. Just do everything you can to call in and be safe and we'll help you to identify the fraudsters where we can.
Chief, I might make a comment after our last meeting that we discussed here. As you know, my mom fit in and out of the hospital and home healthcare workers are coming in. And I sat down with the home healthcare workers and said, "Be not coming in unless there's a family member here." The comment from them was, "Thank you. We understand what's going on and we want to work that way."
Absolutely. Legitimate people will rarely object to being questioned or assessed. Legitimate people don't mind being checked, they expect it. That's a good point.
Thanks, Chief.
You all received the bill list from November eighteen, any comments?
Mayor, what's the line on that bill list? You got it, Friday? I think maybe the people in the audience had some idea how much money we just spent.
Well, five hundred forty? Fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars is this by weekly? I think I'm sorry, that was just for that county.
I think it probably tells.
Two hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and forty dollars.
How often we spend it at? What, you're doing that give the bill list twice enough, right? I've been watching pretty close with Lance Knows. I read the bill list and I call and I say, "Hey, let's just buy this or whatever." And that's pretty close to what it's been running every month. It's big business running this thing.
Yep. We have no... no old business. And do you like the ordinances? Can I have a motion reading like that alone?
There's only a couple pages. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Second. Kidding.
I had to do that a few months ago, I think. The N?
Severn?
Yes.
Callenger?
Yes.
Callenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
I need a motion to concur with the manager's appointment of new member to Firestone Park and Cemetery Board vacancy on its prior term in the fall thirty-one, fourteen.
Simms?
Second.
I will just want to say that you did get this, the two letters that Mayor read. It's wonderful to have two great candidates to choose from for this position and it just makes it very hard to choose. So hopefully, you know, the guy that doesn't win, you know, or you could call it winning, you know, tries again in the future. It's just... it's just really nice that people are passionate and want to help the community and help the park. But I selected Jeff Jackson. And Jeff's with us today and so we you could say something. You know, just kind of maybe introduce yourself and, you know, I know you've read the letter, but appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. It's really nice to be back in Columbia. I'm excited to have my family back here, you know, many of you. And I teach school at middle school, coach the golf team. And we bought a house in the park and the park's near and dear to our family. And I just look forward to serving in any way I can in this capacity, so thank you.
Jeff, you might mention that you're Coach Burrowman's grandson and everybody will know who you are.
Well, that shouldn't matter though.
It does.
I don't do that.
Everybody will know the family now.
Thank you. Thanks.
I'm glad I didn't have to choose that.
Yeah, that was... That was another...
You still argue with yourself.
Where's the...
Yeah, where's the...
Mostly just like where the little mask comes off, sorry.
Yes. Simpson?
Yes. Yes.
Severn?
Ordinance number fourteen dash oh dash two seven eight five, first reading. An ordinance submitting appropriation, ordinance fourteen dash oh dash two seven five five. I had a one hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred dollars in capital, prudent fund, offering them current expenses as they may arise.
Simms?
Second.
Yeah, this is for the... Great to be getting started to get a grant. We're anticipating that and discussing that.
Callenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Severn?
Yes.
Son?
Yes.
We have four executive sessions listed for discussion of collective bargaining matters, discussion of certain personnel matters, discussion of ending litigation, discussion of purchasing property, and most of the other three that session.
Second.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Callenger?
Yes.
Um, yes.
Mayor, we need a couple council comments.
Go ahead.
The chief kind of took my thunder, but you and I did attend the scam session that Wade Bulley, the chief, put together. We thanked the Dutch House because they donated their room and I guess they donated the coffee and...
They donated the beverage, yes.
But the attendance was overwhelming to me. They had to set up extra chairs. The people were attentive, asked us questions, and Wade just did a super job of bringing out some of the scams. And at the end, he just kept saying, "It just sounds too good to be true." It is. So I want to commend you, chief. I don't know who started it. You were waiting.
That was Wade. We credited the crew to him. He did a great job on that and I got to be the face of it. It was truly his project and he did a great job.
Yeah, I was pretty very good. I mean, the thing with calling the phone, get home. I mean, my daughter, I brought my daughter and I told her, "That's why you never tell anybody on the phone whether I'm home or not." And he just be... And they made it look like it was someone in the room calling and they called from a different phone and asked someone random in the audience for their cellphone number and then made that number show up as the caller ID on my phone even if they're calling from another phone. And they were able to manipulate it to make it look like you can call and say you're a family friend or they're calling you saying that they're from the Columbia City Electric Department and your pass due on your bill, please give us your credit card number right now. I mean, you could do it out of ever and you think you're talking to somebody legit based on the caller ID on the phone. So that had helped not only my daughter, but also my grandmother was there. It's neat to be able to show something like that because you can say it, but seeing it in action was very different. I had no idea.
I was just thoroughly impressed with your program, Jason. Don't let it go to your head.
I'm a hero today, maybe a drone for a sentence.
I call somebody, make your phone number, watch your caller ID.
Yeah.
How do they do that?
It's called spoofing. You can get an app for free off the internet. You can like...
Really?
Yeah, it's real scary.
You can get a call that says Columbia Police Department would come up and...
We put our emergency number up there.
And it could be anybody else calling you, yeah. That's all. Simply amazing.
I'm going to executive session, that might go on.
You're calling.
I wouldn't think so. I blame you. See you later, buddy. Till next week.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
My clubs are buried so deep in Agro-Rock, Jason. Behind everything else. I'm rocking it. Good seeing you. Maybe we'll... If not, see you soon. Thanks. Good. Yeah.
Get the coach.
We were bragging about your hard class.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go get them, buddy. You bet.
Daniel, you're hot. I'm going out there. Maybe if I accept the quarter from the... I'll try. Thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Mike, when are you guys going to present the budget?
Oh, we're going to be doing a temporary budget again this year. Releave next month.
Temporary one next month?
Well, we'll have to pass it next month for two thousand... The first three months of two thousand fifteen.
How come? How come we can't get a firm budget?
Well, because a lot of it was due with the negotiations. You know, we just finished up the Aspen negotiations. We just... we just last week finished up the police negotiations. So, you know, we really weren't sure what was going to happen.
Well, I don't sense hanging around here, is there?
No, I'm not. You okay? What happened there? Hip. Total hip replacement.
Did you? Three weeks today.
That's not too bad though. You're doing pretty good.
I just the third leg, but I really need it.
Yeah, I saw.
I see my bark as close as I could.
I see you got yourself a little sticker.
I do, yes, I do.
Use it. We're going to use it.
That's right.
Exactly, you're right. Okay, take care. You going out to post?
No, I'm not going out tonight. I'm pre-registered, but I'm not going.
Okay. So you guys hanging out here?
A little bit. I'm not long, man.
I'm not, Jack. All right, see you.
All right, you too. That'll give all of that. Hi, Jack, how are you?
Pretty good.
See you there.
Okay, Johnson's appointment. All right, yeah?
No, I'm not. Water.
Is he electric again?
Doctor, surgeon. You can ask me questions, I can't answer.
I saw this on the police log today.
Oh, I don't think it was Citywide.
Oh, it wasn't?
No, it's just like with... Southern Avenue and some industrial.
I assume because of the weather.
That's what you're thinking, doesn't the heavy smell? But, you know, don't talk me for that, I'm just... But it wasn't Citywide.
Oh, yeah. They shouldn't have did it before. I was watching the five box and they had that sniper on and that seal on it. Then you think, should be that's what they're doing. I said, I didn't do this. You have to commend the SEALs for all the officers that they had to get in there and all that they did. And they're professional. I think they were sure they had that. I saw that happen. Some reaction. They used the train line. Yeah. They shipped that over there. And they said, they didn't get the phone to the factory. But it was good on that one.
The doctor, buddy.
He said he can't do it too good, so he let him come. It's usually nap time anyways.
Well, Buck, I played football. That's what that...
Yeah, Doc has two tickets for a Saturday night's game or Saturday game against Indiana. I knew when he paid seventy-nine dollars is the cost for him to ticket.
Good old Doc.
What game is that?
Indiana.
Indiana, huh?
At Ohio State, yeah.
Yeah, I'm watching. Yeah, I'm watching college tickets off.
Oh, yeah. Wow. I mean, the grand order put in for two tickets, you know, up through alumni. They told everybody here. One thing is whenever you get tickets, but whenever you, you can't sell them, right? It's to somebody else. Go back to reverse, back to college. Yeah, just go back to the order. Yeah. Yeah, I think I'm swinging on it.
She don't give an executive section. She don't give them.
No.
What happened, yeah? Do you guys see we got some litigation going on? Litigation they get into. Yeah, that whole, yeah, that. There's some problems with purchasing that property. That's that one down in the, the state gas issue, isn't it, Jerry?
That's one, yeah. Yeah, that's, I thought they'd get their laptop all the time. No, no, no. It's good. Yeah. 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 Yeah, that's, I mean, I thought they'd get their laptop all the time. Yeah. Yeah, Jerry. Yeah, that's, I mean, I thought they'd get their laptop all the time. No, no, no. It's good. And then she gets a life control, like, I'm not sure if they went. I said they usually give them a life control about 8:00 o'clock to see how early they went. It's actually 18:00, about 80 degrees. I think we did, I think we did yesterday. We just ate in about 8:00.
You can let us know what happened.
Okay, I will.
You may leave me for it.
I got to stay for one of them.
Oh, do you?
Yeah. Take care.
Okay. We'll see you.
You guys stay on trouble. How you doing, sir?
Good.
Oh, good. You put a new one in there? Yeah, we'll see. Uh, no, see, my cast aren't quite, kind of seems to make a small crack around it. And they make stainless steel clamps that you can slap right on there. That's what we do. I have a sewer in each one of the laundry and furnace rooms. And I get some backup and going 35. You did get some backup? Yeah, the carpet, I had a carpet over in the sewer. It came up and it wet. So I wondered... From that water break? I don't know what it was from. When did it come off? That the same day after we fixed it? Around the same time. I just noticed it, I noticed it the next day or so afterwards. After we fixed the break? I don't know. You know, if we flush that, I think they're pretty good. I don't know if that would... I don't know either. But I'll keep an eye on it. Yeah, I would do that. Yeah. Because I noticed it when I asked the people in the apartment when it happened and they said after they were out there, so. Oh. No, there's, I think we got a call. I don't know where they finished it up there. I was flushing, I don't know. Somebody called, there's a water break, there's all water running down South Main Street, so. That's pretty much what all was said. Which one's 35? First one. First year one. 35, 45. I think, uh... I mean, Katie, where do you think, I know, I like your opinion on this here.